Evening, everyone. Welcome to the including our AI soon to be overlords. Happy Thanksgiving week. It is great to have you all here. Thank you, everyone, for great attendance. I want to give a shout out to the teachers and principals and DOE staff who came in person tonight and will be presenting in a couple of minutes. I'm really thankful for you guys coming during a holiday week. So thank you for coming. I'm looking forward to your presentation soon. I know everyone has places to go and things to do this week. So let's go ahead and start our meeting. We're going to do roll call. Go ahead, Curtis.
Aldana.
Present.
Erickson. Johnson. Johnson. Absent. Kachuk. Menina. Minarby. Pope.
Present.
Quadri.
Yeah, online.
Robadi. Salas.
Here.
Young.
Here, online.
And Lee. Chair of Quorum with 11 members present.
All right, let's start by hearing from the Honolulu Fire Department if they are online. All right. Let's go down to HPD District One.
Hello, I'm Sergeant Sai.
Hey Sergeant Sai.
Hello. Hi, everyone. I'm just going to read the stats from the previous month to this month. So first for motor vehicle thefts, last month it was four. This month it was down to one. For burglaries, last month it was one. This month it was at two. Our theft cases stayed around the same. It was seven last month, seven this month. UEMVs, or that's breaking into vehicles, that was four last month. This month it was one. Assault cases, we didn't have any last month. This month it was at three. Sex assaults, we had none last month, none this month. Graffiti type cases, none last month. We had none this month. And drug cases, we had two last month and two this month. Our total calls for service last month was 397, and this month it went up to 446.
And just to clarify, when you say last month, you mean September and this month, October?
Yeah, correct. Correct, sorry about that.
No problem.
These are the October six.
All right, does anyone have any questions for Sergeant Sai? All right, I'm not seeing anything online or in person. So thank you for coming to our meeting and giving us those stats. I appreciate it.
No problem. Thank you so much. Take care.
Happy Thanksgiving. All right, District Seven. I don't think District Seven is here. The Fire Department may show up soon. I think that they're outside right now. So maybe they will come in. Can we go ahead to filling a vacant seat first? All right, is there anyone in the audience that was hoping to fill the one vacant seat that we have on our board right now? Okay, go ahead to the, come to the mic. All right, do you mind introducing yourself and telling us a little bit about why you would like to join the board?
Yeah, aloha, I'm Kealohilani Wong. I'm interested in joining the board. I've been coming to some of these meetings and I think it'd be great to have just more younger people. I'm representing hopefully the younger generation that lives in Moiliili. And my family has also been here for over 150 years in this aina. So even more so, I feel like it's a kuliana of mine to do that. So yeah, mahalo.
All right, do we need to make a motion to discuss? I, sorry.
Are there any other interested residents? Okay, seeing none, is there a nomination for Kealohilani?
I nominate. Anyone second?
I second.
All right, we don't need a second apparently. All right. Do we, hold on. Is there any questions that we would like to ask Kealohilani before she is voted on? I have a question for you. Is there a particular, you want to come to the mic again? Is there a particular issue that you feel particularly passionate about when it comes to this neighborhood?
I would say that personally, just representing maybe longtime residents and people that are still living here from those families, that there is that old charm that Moiliili has. And with a lot of developments that have been coming up, I hope to preserve some of that in moving forward. I also hope to bring a Kanaka OiVi lens into the discussions and the different presentations and projects that might be coming up in our neighborhood. And yeah, bringing life to the aina that's here and remembering that this place is Hawaii as well. And we all call it home, so we all have a responsibility to mahalama. So those are some of my personal interests and responsibilities, I feel.
Thank you. Any questions? I'm looking around. Okay, we can go ahead and do roll call.
Kealohilani Wong has been nominated to serve on the Makali Neighborhood Board. If you could just say Wong, if you would like to vote for her. If not, just say no vote or abstain. Aldana.
Wong.
Erickson. Johnson. Absent. Kachuk. Menina.
Wong.
Minarby. Pope. Quadri.
Wong.
Robadi.
Wong.
Salas.
Wong.
Young.
Wong.
And Lee. 11 votes for Resident Wong. She has been appointed to the Makali Neighborhood Board.
All right, we're going to take a mini recess so you can get sworn in. Good, afterward turn? Okay, we'll do HP, or Fire Department first, and then we will swear you in and you can come up to the stage. So go ahead, Fire Department. Thank you so much for coming in person and we look forward to your update.
Aloha. My name is Ocean Ko'ouli. I'm the captain with the Makali Moiliili Fire Station, Station 29. And reading the report for October will be one of my firefighters.
Good evening, everyone. My name is firefighter Levy. And the statistics provided below represent confirmed number of incidents in the NHB's geographical area for the previous month. For more details on the incidents and related mapping information, please visit the fire response search tool on our HFD website at fire.honolulu.gov under the News and Info tab. For incident statistics for October 2025, under fires, we have zero structure fires, one wildland brush fire, four nuisance fires, which include rubbish fires outside a structure or vehicle, one cooking fire, and five activated alarms, which are no fires. For emergencies, we have 104 medical emergencies, zero motor vehicle collision with pedestrian, five motor vehicle crash collision, zero mountain rescues, zero ocean rescues, and one hazardous materials incident. And for fire tips and announcements, we have cooking safety. Food has a unique way of bringing family and friends together, especially during the holidays, and cooking can be a relaxing activity. However, it is important to be aware of that cooking fires are the leading cause of home fires and home injuries. By following a few safety tips, you can prevent these dangerous situations. Stay alert while cooking. If you are sleepy or have consumed alcohol, avoid using the stove or stove top. Always stay in the kitchen while cooking. Never leave the stove and heated appliances unattended. Use a timer to remind yourself to check on your food regularly. Keep combustible items like oven mitts, wooden utensils, food packaging, and towels away from your stove top. And keep children and pets at least three feet away from cooking areas. Any questions?
Can you say more about the brush fire? Where was that? Can you speak at the mic?
I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not too sure which brush fire he was referring to. There were a few others that weren't in our area, but we responded to assist. But what I can do is I'll find out that information. I can get it to you.
What counts as a brush fire for us in the area that we're in?
I'm sorry, say that again.
What counts as a brush fire in an urban area?
Or anything concerning grass.
Okay.
Anything that could be caused by discarded cigarettes or somebody being careless with lighters or matches.
All right, any questions on the board for, go ahead, Paul. Could you?
Okay, first thing, I just got out of the hospital, some of you folks know. But I had the pleasure of dealing with the Fire Department. They came to my apartment and brought me to the hospital. It was three weeks ago. Appreciate it. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Call, call the Fire Department if you need an ambulance. That's the deal.
All right, any other questions for the board here in person? All right, Allison, I did give a question, but and also introduce yourself.
Hi, Allison Peterson. I'm on the board of condo here in the area, and the subject of lithium batteries came up again. And there's multiple questions. One, what is the best extinguisher? Or, you know, way to put out a lithium fire, lithium battery fire? Is there any new updates in regulation on the local or federal level? You know, as to, you know, how to, how we're dealing with them? Like, is anything being like not being able to come in? Like, it has to be a regulated type of lithium battery? Like, you have to be a UL rated or something like that? And then, sorry, the last one is, what is the best website to refer to when, for, for safe charging tips?
Those are all good questions. And when it comes to lithium batteries, when it comes to extinguishing any type of lithium battery fire, we do have different types of fire extinguishers. However, depending on the
Do you speak a little closer to the mic?
Depending on the degree of the fire, sometimes with these home extinguishers, it may not be enough to properly extinguish it. Water doesn't really help unless you have copious amounts of water. That's when the Fire Department comes in. So that's one thing. When it comes to regulations with lithium batteries in condos, apartment buildings, and whatnot, that is, that is governed by the regulations that's going to be set by that particular, you know, condo or apartment building and whatnot. As far as the website to go to to find out information about lithium batteries, you can go to the NFPA website, National Fire Protection Agency website, and they can guide you with different dropdown icons that you can, that can take you there to get more information.
Someone said that there was a specific kind of fire extinguisher that was more effective against that type of fire. Is that not true?
It depends on the degree. That would depend on how, how big the fire is. Yeah, so one thing about lithium batteries, when it does ignite, and there's been a lot of, a lot of recent fires caused by electric bicycles, even as far as phone chargers and the phones itself because of the lithium batteries. So that's, that's a, that's, what do we have? The A and B extinguishers, the dry, the dry chemical and stuff like that. It does have an effect somewhat, but if it's, if it's to a degree where it's overwhelming what we bring into the unit, that's where it becomes difficult to extinguish. Any type of fire blanket helps when you can take away part of the the components that creates this fire triangle or fire tetrahedron. So a fire blanket would help. All right. Any other questions, anybody?
All right, happy Thanksgiving. Thank you guys for coming in. You have a question? Sorry, I guess Danielle had a question.
I have one more question. In case of danger of fire, what do you grab to put around yourself to protect against flames?
To put around yourself?
Yes.
The best thing would try to exit the unit as quickly as possible.
Sure.
To put around yourself, sometimes if I was to, if I was to tell you, grab a blanket, grab a coat or anything, by me telling you that, it gives a misconception that you have time to do that. And I would rather any of us, if there's anything that you need, you need the best ways to just exit the unit.
Sure, there was also been concern about synthetic fires. See, excuse me, synthetic textile, they catch fire in one second. Perhaps natural one are better. Natural fibers.
In today's time, because of technology, sometimes a lot of the the combination of different types of materials add to the spread and to the ignition.
Okay, thank you.
So the best thing would be to evacuate as quickly as possible.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
We're good. Thank you, have a good holiday. Okay, we are going to take a very brief reassess while Kealohilani is sworn in. And then we will resume our meeting by maybe hearing from Board of Water Supply. I don't know if they're here, or from Daniel. So let's go. So we're done with the recess? Okay, there is a spot next to Curtis and Paul. Do you want to go down there? I think it's probably better if you can see people and you can't see the stuff. Okay, all right. I don't think Board of Water Supply is here. So let's move on from that. Danielle, do you want to come and give your presentation now? We'd be so honored. All right, we're doing Mayor's Rep for those following along on their agendas.
Hi, everybody, good evening. Justice. So I have some highlights from the Mayor's Newsletter. So the Skyline Segment Two opened for service, which added five miles and four new stations, including Pearl Harbor and the airport. The city's educational, education center relocates as there's a multi-year repair beginning in the municipal parking structure. And then new sewer rates are going into effect on January 1st, 2026 for Oahu residents. So this November 25th edition of the newsletter can be found at honolulu.gov/mayor/newsletter. And I see there's a link in the agenda for that. The Royal Hawaiian Band, they're going to be holding a free concert at the Blaisdell. It's going to be Friday, November 28th. And for the Royal Hawaiian Band's Kaliki Maka Ho'omau at the Neo Blaisdell Concert Center at 7:00 PM. So this is a non-ticketed event, and it's free and open to the public. The doors will open at the Blaisdell at 6:00 PM, and seating is on a first-come, first-served basis. So the concert will feature a lineup of acclaimed Hawaii artists, including Grammy-nominated Henry Copono and two-time Grammy nominee Reatea Helm. The Kamea School's Children's Chorus and other special guests will be there as well. The city will also illuminate Thomas Square Park for concertgoers to enjoy before and after performance. Honolulu City Lights begins the following evening on November 29th with the traditional tree lighting ceremony at Honolulu Hale, followed by the Public Workers Electric Light Parade down King Street. There's also a new system for electronic press releases. So the city and county has updated our press release distribution system, making it easier for Oahu residents and members to, of the public, to receive these important updates. So as of November 5th, 2025, subscribers will start receiving press releases in their inbox through the new system. And to sign up for these press releases, visit honolulu.gov/mayor/newsletter-signup. Okay, so moving on, we had concerns about Eisenberg Street last meeting. And the question last meeting was, can DTS provide a summary of possible roadway improvements for Eisenberg Street? Will the speed limit change on Eisenberg Street? So the update from DTS is, DTS is proposing a road diet on Eisenberg between Kapilani Boulevard and South King Street. The road diet will consider adding bicycle lanes, pedestrian refuge islands, and other major, or other measures to improve safety for all road users. And no change in the 25 mile per hour speed limit is planned at this time. Moving on, there was concerns on the Alaway Bridge project. So what is the current phase and timeline for the Alaway Bridge project? So on June 25th, 2025, the Alaway Bridge project reached a significant milestone with the completion of the federally required consultation required under Section 106 of the Historic Preservation Act. The federal government is now reviewing the final environmental assessment under the National Environmental Policy Act. The design, build, procurement is scheduled for winter of 2025, and future updates can be found on the Alapono website, which is honolulu.gov/dts/ala-pono. Okay, so last meeting, member Menina, or Menina, excuse me, raised concerns about DTS removing the crosswalk markings on high-volume roads like South King Street. And the question was asked if DTS can provide criteria and reasoning for crosswalk removals. So the marked crosswalk along South King Street corridor were removed in accordance with the city and county's Complete Streets Design Manual. The manual, based on Federal Highway Administration studies and guidelines, recommends that crosswalks on high-volumes, multilane roadways like South King Street should not be marked unless appropriate safety measure enhancements, such as curb extensions, pedestrian-activated rectangular rapid flashing beacons, or other signals are installed. So in the interim, while we recognize this may be inconvenient, an inconvenience to the community, DTS recommends that pedestrians continue to use the nearest signalized crosswalk at adjacent intersections. Last meeting, there was a concern on illegal parking and parking enforcement. She raised concerns about illegal parking and enforcement along South King Street and other roadways in the neighborhood. So the question was asked if HPD can monitor during rush hour, 3:30 PM to 6:30 PM. And also, there was a question on if the meters along South King Street have sensors to determine if a vehicle is parked. If so, can DTS share data on how many vehicles were parked during no parking hours? So that's 3:30 to 6:30 on business days. So a District Seven watch lieutenant spoke to Ms. Ochi for clarification on the location she is concerned about. There was concern on, about various parking offenses that occurred on Houston Street, Date Street, Pula Ridge Street, South King Street, Kapilani Boulevard during the PM tow zones. District Seven patrol officers reported that they do conduct enforcement of the tow zones of those areas during the afternoons. Officers observed that the majority of parking offenses are occurring during business areas, are occurring in the business areas. So HPD will continue to monitor and take appropriate enforcement action for violations. And from DTS, smart parking sensors along South King Street are equipped with sensors that detect both vacancy and occupancy. So drivers can use the City Park Smarter app to see what stalls are available and pay for parking. In regards to occupancy data for the PM towway parking hours, if you could let, let us know the specific section, block along South King Street, so we can better search for the data. And finally, Ms. Wong asked about current and future Bill 7 projects in the neighborhood. And can we get a list of those? Can they be provided to the public? And I have a list of those as of November 5th, which I can leave with the Neighborhood Board. Yeah, it's that list.
Great, thank you very much, Dan. I appreciate that. I, if you want to stay up here and see if there's any questions. I just wanted to update everyone else because we, as you know, we spend a lot of time talking about Eisenberg last time and the changes. So there will be a DTS spokesperson at the January meeting. We will have, they will be talking about different changes they're adding to the neighborhood. And if we do not feel like there's sufficient time to ask all the nuts and bolts, we can work with Justin for the Transportation Committee to have even more in-depth conversation. Because I know there's lots of concerns about different projects, and so we will allocate some time for it, but we can allocate even more time for it in the committee meeting. So just wanted people to know that there. Are there any questions for Dan that people have? Go ahead, Paul.
First thing is, you know the speed bumps they have in McKinley High School and all over town? Are they city or state? City.
Aren't they, wait, the speed bumps are the speed tables. The speed tables are state, right?
About the, you have to slow down or whatever. I'm just wondering, what do you think the percentage of people slow down for those? Or people that just drive right past them? I think it's
I wouldn't know offhand. I, I slow down for them because it tends to damage your vehicle.
They slow down for them, but you drive around, it doesn't not happen. Is there any way we could find out what we can do to, to curtail that?
Sure, I think that's a question we could ask. I don't know if it's been studied.
Paul, you could also send it to me too, since DTS is coming, and then we can, they can put it on their thing to ask that. Okay, go ahead, Justin.
Chair, just oh, sorry, sorry about that. Chair, I just wanted to clarify. So Kapilani Boulevard is under jurisdictional operation of DTS City and County, but the speed humps were installed by Hawaii State Department of Transportation as part of a state-county agreement.
Thanks, Justin.
So you mentioned the design build bid for the bridge was going to be in winter 2025? Do you mean like in next month, in December?
Yeah, I'm having trouble hearing you, I'm sorry.
Oh, the, the design build bid for the bridge you mentioned would be, oh, in winter 2025? So within the next month or month and a bit?
Yeah, the procurement is, is scheduled for 2025. So that's getting the funding together. I'm not totally sure when, when that design bid contractor will be on board and they'll get notice to proceed. So I don't have that update with me.
Okay. Thanks. Could you get more specific dates on that?
Sure, sure, I can, we can look into that.
That's also DTS, so we can also ask them to be know that. All right, are there any other board members with questions online? All right, go ahead, Laura.
Following up on what was just said, we need specific dates. It's sitting in the federal government's hands now with unknown date as to when they might actually approve it. At that time, there is then probably the city and county will trigger, or the DTS will trigger a Fonzie. And after Fonzie will take 30 days before something actually comes into being. So you can't even put out an RF request for, for project until that, after that time. It's probably after the beginning of the year. What I'd like is for the very specific dates, and you can email me, because I think we'd all like to know. because I think we'd all like to know when those dates are going to be. And I'm, I'm very serious about it because you know that we don't want some things sprung on us at Thanksgiving and Christmas and New Year's time, and that may be what they're planning to do. So let's, let's do it the right way. We are the community. Thank you very much.
Okay, just a reminder. Hello? Hello? Just a reminder, we are talking to DTS next month. So if you have DTS questions, please email them to me and I will make sure that DTS covers them in their presentation. We literally have someone from DTS coming, so. It will be, but we also have no more meetings because we are resourcing next month. So the next time we will hear from anyone regarding this stuff is the end of next month. All right. Are there any other questions that are not pertaining to DTS that you have for Dan right now? Okay. Allison, did you have a question? I didn't see. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving. All right, Taylor, I think you are here.
Hi, Charlie.
Hey.
Hello. So yes, one of the updates we did want to share is that we received communication via email that one of your board members, Daniela Minerpi, was wanting to get an update on the McCully Street Bridge. We did reach out to Deputy Director John Nouchi. And I know, of course, that a representative is going to speak with you folks next month, or sorry, January. But he did let us know that there are no major infrastructure improvements planned for the McCully Street Bridge at this time. So that January meeting may be a good time to readdress this issue. But wanted to share that because he did ask us to follow up on that. And then just a kind reminder to, you know, invite your family, friends, and neighbors to our community cleanup at Pavaa In Hall Park, currently scheduled for Saturday, which I believe is December 6th, from 9:00 to 11:00 AM. So thank you to the Department of Parks and Rec and the McCully Mo'ili'i neighborhood board for partnering with us on this. But yes, please invite your friends and family. We are, you know, hoping to get a good turnout because that park, you know, is a difficult spot in our community and we really try to want to clean it up. But yes, please let me know if you have any questions. I'll bring it back to my boss. Thank you.
Taylor, I know that you're aware of this. I just wanted to flag it again. But along the Alaway Canal, we still have a significant number of streetlights that are out. I think they're all out between the parking lot by McCully and about midway through the field. And then after that, hello, there maybe half of them are out. So I know that they were doing Christmas lights for a while and weren't able to do that, but it would be really awesome if those could get.
Yeah, I actually made a request for this a little while ago. But sorry, can you just repeat the location one more time? So between the parking lot to the bridge?
The, yes, there's a lot out, but even after the bridge that connects the two parks, there's still a significant number that are out as well. I, I think you have the numbers of them, but I could always resend.
Yes. Yeah, we did submit that, but I'm going to try to follow up directly with the streetlights person. So we can just see what the status is on that. But sorry, I didn't realize it was out for this. It's still out.
No, no worries. Thank you. All right. Are there any other questions for Councilwoman Nishimotos? Okay, our newest member. Hi.
Hi, Taylor. Thanks for the update. I was just wanting to see if there is an update from the concern that I brought up last month regarding the October 24th traffic hazard that was on Koolidge Street with the unattended trailer and the big trucks that were there.
So we did submit that request for someone to look into it, but because that was a very like time sensitive request, which you did the right procedure, which was calling HPD directly, right? Because it wasn't like an abandoned vehicle per se, it was there. They were doing business and they didn't have the proper permitting. So you did do the correct process in which you said that you called HPD directly and HPD reported to the site. That would be the correct, you know, and I just, I'm not sure if that outcome was what you wanted, but that was the correct way of the process wise what you did. And yes, we did report it, but I'm not sure as far as, you know, them going back and citing people. I don't know exactly how that process works. I'm not too familiar with any situations like that, actually, honestly. But I do think like in another situation, if that were ever to be the case, you did the right thing is just call immediately, call HPD immediately because they would be the right people to make those decisions.
So HPD would be the ones who'd be making the call basically and citing, not.
Well, the good thing is they caught it on, you know, they were there on site. It's kind of one of those things, it would be probably difficult to cite them in, you know, after the fact. But because you did do that immediately, I think that was definitely the correct process. And I'm sorry if that wasn't the outcome you wanted. But yeah, I don't know exactly what the outcome was from like what they did end up citing. So we did try to find that out, but I haven't heard back from them yet.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Daryl?
Hi, Taylor. I was wondering if you needed the numbers for those light poles? I meant, I sent it to you before.
Yes, no, I did submit them. So as long as it's the same ones as you've mentioned, sorry, I submitted them. But now, yeah, thank you for just bringing it to our attention again because sometimes they'll just fix it without telling us. But if they haven't fixed it yet.
No, it hasn't.
I'm going to follow up again directly with the person. I think I have, I'm able to get in contact with them. So hopefully, yeah, it's under DFM.
Okay, so you don't need, you don't need the.
No, it's the, it's the same thing. I have it on email.
All right. Thank you, Taylor.
Are there any questions among community members for Councilwoman Nishimotos office? Or online? I think Daryl already went. Okay, all right. Thank you, Taylor, for coming and have a great holiday.
Oh, yes, and we'll see you at the park cleanup.
Okay, sorry. I think Daryl may have, Daryl, do you have a follow-up question or are you good?
I'm good. I'm good. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Taylor. Thanks, Daryl. All right, we are going to go ahead and move to board business. So we have approval of initial convening meeting written summary for video record from July. Is that from, is that right? Or did we just? Okay. Does anyone have any objections with this? Are we good to move to the next item?
I move to adopt the July meeting minutes as amended by me, the secretary.
My second. Are there any objections? All right. Thank you, Adendita, for working on that. All right. We have approval of regular meeting written summary for video record from last month. Is there a motion to adopt these minutes? Daniela, can you motion to the mic?
Adopt these minutes, yes.
All right. My second. Do we have any objections to that? All right. Let us move on to one of the main presentations of the night, which is hearing from Department of Education and a lot of the educators and leaders in our community. We will have Superintendent Dilworth, Dilwith, excuse me, come up and then you'll be introducing your staff as we go along.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Lanell Dilith. I'm the Complex Area Superintendent for all the schools in the Kaumaki area, McKinley area, and Roosevelt area. So it's a total of 29 schools. But what I have here with me tonight are five proud principals of our neighborhood schools and one vice principal. So just a little background of our demographics in Kaumaki. So in the Kaumaki complex area, there's 10 schools total. There are seven elementary schools, two middle schools, and one high school, Kaumaki High School. So out of the 10 schools, nine of them are Title I schools. So that means they are at or above 48% in the poverty level income for households that qualify them to be a Title I school. And we service approximately 4,000 students, give or take. So I've asked each principal tonight to create one slide to give you some updates on what's happening at the school as far as enrollment, test scores, different bright spot of what's happening at the schools. And we'll go ahead and start with Alaway Elementary School and Principal Debuska.
I just wanted to say too, if there's any ways that you think the board can help you, feel free to please share that as part of your presentation.
Good evening. I'd like to introduce my vice principal, Jade Wong. I actually had more slides because there's so much going on at school. But Kaz Dilwith said we have to have one. So my vice principal is wonderful and put everything into one slide. So just sharing with you, we have actually a student enrollment of 379 students. We are a high needs school, a Title I school. We have about 50% of our school students come from disadvantaged households. We actually service two shelters in our area. So we have seen an increase in enrollment due to the increase of, of the shelter use. For our student population, we have a very diverse population with over 32% of second language learners, over 20 different languages spoken at our school. We do have pre-K through fifth grade at our school. We have an EOL preschool program as well as a Head Start preschool program at our school. We have an attendance rate of about average daily average is about 90% with 69 attending regularly daily. I mean, yeah, daily. So achievement, we did see a little dip last year after we've seen several years of gains following COVID. But it shows us that we are continuing our journey to focus on student achievement in the areas of ELA and math as well as science. The biggest aha for us or bright spot is that we've shown a lot of growth in our data. So while you see the testing grades in three to five, we see overall student growth from K to five. So we have been very focused on identifying the needs of our students and providing those supports throughout the school day. You'll see on one of our bright spots is our student satisfaction survey in which we have a lot of our families are very satisfied with our, our school performance. Staff is about 80% and then also support staff is about 90 and then 100. So we're a very happy community at Alaway Elementary School. We have a lot of bright spots because we are a leader in Me Lai House School focused on the eight habits of highly effective people from Stephen R. Covey's work. So we focus on teaching our students eight habits of highly effective people, practicing that in our culture, addressing social emotional learning needs and fostering and empowering all students, teachers, staff, community members to be a voice in our community and help us to thrive.
Good evening. I'm Wendy Cow. I'm the principal at Luna Lilo Elementary School, which is right down the road. So what's up on the screen is my one slide. I had many more as well. And then I got scolded. So we are working on empowering our students to make a globally positive impact. We have an enrollment right now of about 248 is, so my number is wrong. We fluctuate anywhere from 240 to 255. Our enrollment changes weekly, sometimes daily. We'll lose about seven students a week. We'll gain about 10 students. So our, our enrollment is a pretty large revolving door. We have experienced a trend that goes downward, but we've been picking up students. So hopefully that's a positive thing. We are a high needs Title I school. We have what's called a CEP program. That means that we serve the students free breakfast and lunch across the board. So no student pays for their meals at our school. It's been that way since COVID and we're hoping it remains that way because that's what makes it easier for all of our families to at least rely on meals for breakfast and lunch. We have strong partnerships with the Rotary, with the Coast Guard, with a lot of our community partners. And they have really impacted our school. And while they have suffered some serious setbacks from the shutdowns and whatnot, now our students are able to see what it's like to give back in kind. So they've built a really strong partnership with us and we, we've been returning the favors back and forth with them. Our daily attendance is about 92%. We do have a lot of chronic absenteeism, but we've built the, we've built the community of they like to come to school. So we want to keep that going. As far as the updates on what we do for illnesses and things of that nature, we just encourage updating their vaccinations and we make vaccinations available on our campus. So we run clinics, we run, we run educational shops. As far as our test scores, we're very proud of that because we do a lot of targeted professional development. Our teachers have seen an uptick in the test scores, 4% for ELA, 11% for math. So we are seeing a pretty good upward trend in our test scores and we've only got up to go. So we're, we're very proud of what we've done so far. And as far as the tech expectations, well, we all know everybody's got one of these in their hand. And unfortunately, that's the reality that we live in. So we don't say that they can't have one, but we ask that it not be used in school. And we just do a lot of outreach to our parents. We do a lot of digital citizenship. We do a lot of parent coffee hours. We bring in HPD. We do presentations to show the parents what that might look like if it doesn't get monitored properly.
Hi, I'm principal at Kuhio Elementary School. My name is Robin Tom. So similar to the other schools in the area, we have we're a CEP school where all students get free breakfast and lunch. We're one of the smaller schools in the area across from the Humane Society with about 175 students and we fluctuate as well. So any given week, we could go plus or minus five. One of the bright spots we have right now is that since COVID, we've seen an increase in our ELA English Language Act scores, 10%. Although it does, has fluctuated a bit, that's one of our biggest gains. And our focus for our teachers is on professional development. So they're constantly getting training, especially in the core areas, English, math, and science. So they have a lot of professional development. Our daily attendance is about 93% with the chronic. Students who attend daily is, they're about at 76%. And as far as technology, none of our students really, we haven't had an issue with cell phones in the classrooms. They're pretty respectful. Our students are great. I think we have the happiest campus with our best students. So we are we are a small school with a close knit family feel. And one-to-one phone books, but no real behavior issues or anything like that. We're really a cute, small school. Thank you.
Yeah, my logo was there, but unfortunately, it's a big gray box. My name is Mike Harano. I'm the very proud principal at Washington Middle School. I've been the principal for 22 years at Washington. So, thank you. So a little change from all the talk, but I want to ask you, how many of you think back and remember your middle school years? This is ages 10 to 15. Think back to when you were 10 to 15. How many of you have positive memories of your time? How many of you have positive memories of your time, 10 to 15? Okay, how many of you not so much? Okay, so middle school is just a very adolescence. It's just a very difficult time. Our students' brains are changing more rapidly, right? In the time that they're with us than they, than any other time in their life, except when they're very young, but cognitively they don't recognize what's going on in their brain. So the challenge at middle school is how do we educate students whose brains are going in all these different directions? So we prescribe to middle level philosophy and practices, which include advisories, a high dose of elective classes or encore classes, we call them, and of course, support for academics. So we focus on growth more than we focus on test scores or other things that people take off. Because again, in adolescence, right? There's so much going on in their life that it's a very difficult time. So we try to remind our parents, right? Because we have parent conferences all the time. And when we call them in generally, their child is in trouble. We try to remind them that, imagine you're a teacher and you have 25 of your middle school students in front of you. And that's what a day in life in Washington Middle School is like. But despite that, right? If you look at our data, right? We actually have high growth in ELA and math, right? 75 something percent in ELA, 72% in math, right? And that means that when kids enter us in sixth grade and they exit us in eighth grade, right? We are able to get them to score and grow their score in those three years, which is the big challenge, right? We also focus on SEL, the Panorama Survey and the Wayfinder Program are the programs that we use to have students look at, again, their sense of belonging, right? And their self-management skills, right? And we focus on that. We, as you might imagine, have some issues with our cell phone. But we have, we have just a saying, right? Not now, not appropriate. And we engrain, engrain that in our students. So during school or on campus, you won't see them with their cell phone. But they're middle school kids. And so I guarantee you, if they have a chance in the restroom or out back somewhere, they're trying to sneak it out. So again, it's just a matter of being vigilant and reminding students about what needs to be done. Our bright spot is that we just had a renovation of our band room with the Good Tidings Foundation, Larry Harper, and also with Jake Jimbukuro, who is an alumnus of Washington, right? So that was a great bright spot. But overall, again, our students are, they're great, right? People have sometimes the wrong impression of what middle school is like, sometimes from what they remember of their own middle school times, right? And I'm not saying that every day is trouble free, but we certainly work really hard at making sure our kids leave us in eighth grade and get ready for Kamaki High School. Laura Lee, thank you.
Thank you. Is that, is that good? All right. So thank you for inviting us here tonight. My name is Laura Leah Rowi, principal of Kamaki High School, home of the Bulldogs. Very proud of our fabulous school and complex. So we have an enrollment of about 536 students, grades nine through 12. We have about 57% Title I schools. So we also receive CEP free meals. We also house the Secondary English Language Newcomers Program. And these are students that are in the United States for less than three years. So their initial year up until three years of being a new to English, they can come to our school. We, our attendance is a struggle, but right now we are up to 85% daily attendance. But our chronic absenteeism, those students who have more than 15 absences are almost 40%. ELA and math, we have made gains in all of our areas, especially in graduation rate. We have gone from 64% to 79% in graduation rate, which is great. Our technology, since COVID, we are all one to one. All of our students have devices. We have no cellphone on, in classrooms, but they can use their cell phones on campus. So anytime they are not in a classroom, they can use their phones. We, upcoming, we have in January, we will have three retired resource officers, which are from HPD retired, starting in January, they will be on our campus. They will help us with maintaining safety in our campus as well as being role models of law enforcement and start to get our students interested in that as a workforce readiness skill. And then we just finished on Tuesday, we will have our final inspection of our new fire alarm and intercom system. So we will have a safer campus as well as we can now talk to each other on an intercom system. Our celebrations, our enrollment increased by 12% this school year. So that's great. Our full, we have received after five years of being probationary in our accreditation, we are finally, we received a full WASC accreditation. And then after so many years, we are no longer a CSI school. And a CSI school is schools that need continuous school improvement. So you need to get a lot of support. We were able to make consistent gains over the last three years. So we are no longer a CSI school. Yay. And then lastly, I'm kind of embarrassed to say this, but I shouldn't be. And then I have been named the National Secondary School, High Schools Principal of the Year. Thank you so much.
All right. Are there any, would you like to comment on any like of the bigger picture things that you're seeing and how Kamaki kind of fits into the larger state?
Yeah. Gosh, Kamaki Complex, we're 10 schools out of 258 schools. It's really important that we have a leader at the high school, at the forefront, pulling the schools together so that we can work vertically from pre-K through to the middle school, up to the high school. And just very proud of these people who are here on a Monday night after working all day to share stories about their schools. So we're well on our way and I thank them all for being here if there's any questions.
All right. So let's start with the board. Daniela, hold on. We're going to start with the board.
Can you hear me? Yes. First of all, I want to thank you all of all for coming. And I have a special spot in my heart for Ala Wai School because my three children went there and they have been happy, well-educated to a point that one now is an attorney, another one is almost a PhD and another one is a faculty. So great education. Thank you. I don't know as well the other school, but it sounds like they were fantastic place to grow up and learn. And my question is very simple. Do you use, how is it called, the local farmer vegetables and fruit to, for, for your lunches and breakfast?
Yes, so there is.
Locally produced. Thank you.
Yes, there is a movement right now to get farm to school. And I think a lot of schools are already serving local vegetables and fruits in their cafeterias for breakfast and lunch. So it is one of our initiatives and the superintendent is moving forward with it to increase.
Thank you. And now I have a very sad question to ask. You may be able to answer yes or no, maybe willing to answer. Are you aware of any child trafficking in your schools?
These principals are not aware of it, but I do know that it does happen in some schools and we are very aware of it and we do intervene.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Kayla Holani?
Yeah. Hello, everyone. Thank you guys so much for coming. I have family members that went to every single one of your schools. So thank you from 80 years ago to 15 years ago. People have worked at your schools as well. I didn't go there, but by default I represent as well. So I am just curious if you folks can share how we can support the schools or if there's upcoming fundraisers, fun fair, I don't, you know, anything that you folks have in mind that it would be good for the community to know about.
Mind coming up to the mic?
So on December 13th, we have a craft fair at Kamaki High School. Thank you. So we'd like to invite you to that. As far as the farm to table, Kamaki High School, we have a fabulous agriculture program. It's an entrepreneurship. So we grow, we have lettuce towers, we grow all kinds of things and then we turn it into a product that we can sell. So we start with genki balls. So we make that for the Ala Wai and any other programs that can use that to clear water. We also have, we do soils because we compost all of our cafeteria food. So we compost it several ways with worms, of course, and then we compost them with machines and other ways so that it's a lot faster so that we can take care of all of our foods. We can't do dairy and meat though. We don't have the programs for that. And then we also turn our products into something we sell. So we sell gummies. So we sell, last year we won the Young Entrepreneur Challenge with our basic gummies. But this year we got mamaki, we have sweet pea, we have turmeric, ma, ma, what do you call it? Marangai? Yeah, marangai. So they mixed it like it's marangai and strawberry. We got sweet pea and it's cute and it's lavender and it's really sweet. And then we've got like the turmeric is with honey. And then there's something else we have with oranges. So kind of cool that the kids and the kids make this, their own recipes. But I'd like to, because I could go on and on. Please come to Kamaki High School. You're welcome to take a look at our ag program. It's really fun and you will see the energy of our students and the teachers. And we also do, we have a printing shop run by our Special Ed Education Department. So we print shirts, we print the stickers and we make all kinds of things. So please welcome. Thank you.
Are there any other principals that want to share here?
The only other thing that I can think of is if, sorry. If you know of people who might be interested in part-time or full-time work, a lot of the schools are always looking for workers. So educational assistants, office aides, part-time teachers. We are always short-staffed in those areas. So it might be something to be worth approaching the schools and inquiring about, or volunteering.
What are the ways that people volunteer in? Can you, can you share a little bit about how volunteers?
The volunteering usually like supervision or within the classrooms or within the office areas. They, they can do just basic officerial duties. The supervision is just like in the cafeteria or on the playgrounds. Some of the schools, they might have crossing guards or things of that nature. We, we have systems in place to do checks to make sure that they're able to volunteer. A lot of the times what we tend to see is the will, but then the consistency breaks down. So if they come as a hui, then at least we can have a little bit more of a consistency.
Hi, good evening. Jade Wall, Vice Principal at Ala Wai Elementary School. Sorry, I'm a little tall. I don't want to bend over. We are looking for volunteers. We do food bank every week on Thursdays. So we start our work at eight o'clock in the morning. The food bank truck delivers the items and a few of our staff members and parent volunteers, we sort through the produce and things like that. And we get them ready for distribution after school. So we serve about 50 to 100 families every week. And it's a lot of hard work, but good work. And we're always looking for someone to consistently help us with that. So that's every week. We also do community food bank once a month.
Justin, did you have a question?
Thank you, Chair. I just want to thank all the principals and vice principals coming out tonight, just sharing the amazing work y'all are doing. I suppose I have two questions. My first question is regarding chronic absenteeism, that is admittedly a wicked problem. My understanding a lot, some of it can be correlated due to poor transportation choice options, such as for the parents who can't drive their children to school. So they often walk or bike or roll, but we may not have sidewalks or it's not a dangerous road. My question would be, have any of the schools investigated the potentiality of walk to school buses? I know one example that comes to mind is, my apologies, an intermediate school on the Big Island did one for about a year and they reduced their absenteeism rate by 15%. And city and counties, Safe Route School Program does have a, are trying to initiate more of a comprehensive walking school bus program for elementary and intermediate schools to pursue. My second question would be for schools who have crossing guards, technically HPD calls it the school monitoring program. If there's been any outstanding challenges or difficulties, be able to accept volunteers into the program. Thank you. Oh, yes. Sorry. So a walking school bus is you have volunteers like a principal, vice principal. They come out along a predefined route after working with parents on where their children, who are likely to walk or bike to and from school. And you have checkpoints essentially where you have a volunteer, usually a faculty or sometimes a dedicated parent who will just come out, make sure children are safe and be able to go down to the area. And Kel Kaheli, my apologies, that's the school. They were able to do that program for a year and reduce their absenteeism rate by 15%. And county Safe Route School is doing that. And if there is a concern regarding funds, the DOT Safe Route School Advisory Committee has $6 million per year they can allot for funding for these kind of activities.
So to speak to the walking school buses, we have tried it. Not to say that it doesn't work. We have a difficult time getting to the families that we need to come to school the most. They tend to shy away from us. They don't want, they don't want us to come to their door. They make arrangements to meet us on the street and then they don't show. The ones that are already walking, we'll end up picking them up and they'll, they'll join us. But the ones that we really wanted to get don't always come to the point of pickup. So the walking school buses do help and we do pick up the kiddos along the way. They just don't get the ones that we were actually targeting, at least for us. A lot of them are in apartment buildings. We can't get inside the building. So we can't get to the door to, to get to them. So we're trying to figure out how to So we're trying to figure out how to access that without getting a little too creepy. Like I know people that live in the building, so can I get you to go knock on their door? That's a little overreaching. So we're working on that for us personally. As far as the crossing guards, we had one and that one was very consistent. But when that person retired, so to speak, they were already retired, but when they really retired, it was hard to find someone to succeed them. So it's finding that one or two really reliable people that just come out afterward. And so that's where we need our neighborhood connections to come along and find the next person to step in.
Are there other questions on the board? All right, go ahead Superintendent.
You know, one other thing that's been helping us with attendance is this idea of a bilingual school home assistant. And we've pushed that, I've pushed that in my schools over the last couple of years. What we found is when we hire people from the community that speak the language, that live in the neighborhood, they're able to go out into the communities and do something similar to a walking school bus. Or I know I had a parent up in Palolo would just drive through and be like, let's go, one's gone in the house and you know, we woke kids up. So it's been very beneficial, but it's finding the right, it's finding the personnel to be able to do that. But it's been super helpful. And I think most of our schools here have had, we call them BSHAs, but it's the bilingual school home assistants.
Vivida, did you want to ask your question?
Okay. I'm wondering if you guys could comment on how absenteeism looks different after the pandemic versus before?
I think the pandemic has made it more okay for parents and families to feel like their students can stay home and still learn. So sometimes they think, not everyone, but sometimes the feeling is that they can catch up with the homework sent home or, you know, do the work on their own. But they're really missing out on the teacher instruction, which is what they really need. And the, you know, the online or the workbook things that they can do independently don't really catch them up. So I think that's part of some of the issue.
It's actually had a huge impact on our schools. I think after the pandemic, a lot of families were not willing to risk and send their children back to school, right? They're still afraid of the pandemic and what's happening. We have seen our enrollment decrease because of that. And if anybody knows how schools are funded in Hawaii, you're funded based on your enrollment. So we've seen an uptick in families choosing to homeschool their children instead of send them to school, which of course impacts funds at the school, which means less teacher positions, less funding, less supports. But yeah, it's had a huge impact. And I think we're still trying to make our way back to where we were pre-pandemic.
One of the reasons I wanted to have DOE come speak to us was about technology. I read a lot of education articles pretty regularly that talk about how many challenges educators have with screens in the classroom. And I've seen states like Florida, New York pass bills that require students to put their phones away at the beginning of the school day and get them afterwards. But I hadn't observed that much traction here as far as introducing statewide legislation about that. I just was curious if that's something that you guys would support and what type of bill you would want in that direction.
You know, it hasn't been a huge issue for us like we've seen in other states. I think because people have brought it to the forefront, our Board of Education has now identified one of their committees to actually do some research and work on coming up with a common policy. But for the most part, like our elementary schools, we really don't have major issues with cell phones, more the middle and high school. But each school would monitor their own usage in school and carry out their own consequences, whether it be holding the phone till after school is over or, you know, giving kids warnings or what have you. But it hasn't been a huge, huge issue. I haven't heard from any of my 29 schools.
All right, go ahead Laura, and I think there's probably some other community members too. You guys can feel free to ask some questions.
Yes, thank you all for coming and I've worked with some of you, whatever. Just to give you a little bit of background, first of all, Justin, DTS axed my idea to have raised crosswalks at the two Alawai School and Kohio School where repeatedly cars run through the stop signs. It's not safe. But the main thing I want to talk about with, many people don't really know me, but I was an ESEA Title I middle school teacher in ABE English. I really know, it's like about almost all of my students were non-native speakers. And they all came in, were really rushed through ESL, but then came into my classroom. Everything else, not, you know, it takes a while to get comfortable in the classrooms. And I really do know and I hope them all success, you know, in their future years. What I tried to do when I came here was, the Kamaki Community School for Adults was in full swing and we had 1,000 students there. And if you can advocate in any particular way, we had loads and loads, I could have taught many more classes of the parents that were coming, that were non-speakers also. And they may have gotten through ESL, but I always ask them, can you carry on a conversation in an elevator? And most of the time they were hesitant to do anything at all that was comfortable in our own community. And if you can really do that, if you can advocate for them to come back, we wanted to do it even as a charter school for the, you know, going through the night school. And they nixed us. They said we weren't K through 12. Hey, if all of the people are older than that, they really need help. How do you help the children is you help the parents also and you bring them together. And the other thing I started, and it was at Kohio School, but that one, Evie Howe was principal.
30 seconds.
But I couldn't, I couldn't make it work because of some higher up people. That is, take Achieve 3000 and have the parent and child work together on the computer for an hour, whatever it is in school, and have them work together, collaborate in the English program. They'll go, as you know, that program goes up to whatever level you want it to go to. And you need to be independent readers and that's really what helped them. And it's a program I recommend too. Okay, thank you very much.
I can add to that. In the Kamaki McKinley Roosevelt Complex area alone, which is only made up of 29 schools, we have 20% of the state's EL population, right in this urban Honolulu area. So all of our schools are challenged and working on how do we provide access and equal opportunity for our EL students across all of our schools. And I think due to funding, the community schools were at one point brought together. And so McKinley Community School for Adult also come, adults also come under me and they have five campuses. Yep, yep. And what I've seen some of my schools do, and Kelly Kolani, for example, is they would have computer classes for their EL, the parents of EL students after school on campus, financial literacy classes. They would have like washing machines, drying, you know, machines so that they can come to the school to take care of some of the basic needs. But it's huge in KMR and we've been working on it for about five years. And we've seen an increase in achievement and proficiency for our English learners.
Luna Lilo Elementary offers parent classes for EL parents. We just haven't had very many people take advantage of it. We offer it in the mornings after they drop off their students. We've tried to offer it in the afternoons when they pick them up. Now we're, we've opened it up to just the community to see if perhaps we can get a larger base of people to apply and take the classes. We have the partnership with McKinley School for Adults. We have the teacher. We just need the students. So.
All right, go ahead Alison.
Can I make one suggestion for the craft fair? Okay, some of the schools are in really dense condo areas. Maybe you can go to the condominiums and, you know, to the board, give them a flyer or make a presentation. They have it probably monthly, something like that. I'll be sure to put it on our community bulletin board that we have in our building. My question is with such a high percentage of EL students, does that, is that, are the non-EL students impacted by the focus and the support? You know, and of course they need that, but do the non-EL students get impacted by that?
Yeah. You know, I wouldn't say they're negatively impacted. So we've been working with this consulting company called West Ed for about five years. And what their purpose is, is to teach us, teach our schools, teach our teachers different scaffolds, different strategies that can be used in the classroom to help EL students access general education. But really what it is, is its best practices for all students. So whether they're a second language learner or in special education or even just a general ed student that's struggling, the efforts are really helping all the students.
Do you have any other community member questions or board questions? Do you mind coming up to the microphone?
I have a comment for the Kamaki High School principal. When you mentioned that there are going to be three policemen from next year, my ears perked up and I thought, oh, good. Because I am often worried about the students at your school because of these unsavory characters that I see on Alawai Boulevard. I think they have drug dealing from their cars. They're under the bridge. Also that has gotten a little better. And frankly, I feel so sorry for the students from your school. The Yolani School students, they seem very protected. They have parents who volunteer and it just seems like two different worlds close to each other. And I feel very bad during the pandemic, I, my husband and I would run on the field. And then one day a security guard said, sorry, you can't do it anymore. And she didn't understand why either, but then later I understood. It's at the bus stop there. In the morning I see bottles, alcohol, it's just, and I think people in the neighborhood complained. Not about the people who use it for jogging, but what goes on later in the night. And I think, I don't know what I think, but I wonder if there, if it's an issue, if there is being enough attention given to that problem. Is it, do you find that it is a problem?
30 seconds.
Yeah, that's it. I just wanted to share that. Thank you for listening.
First of all, thank you for thinking of us. We do have our challenges, but I think we have a lot of things put in. We do have night security. We also are working on getting our entire campus fenced. We have, we try to teach our students to be a little bit more kind and thoughtful. And then the community as a whole has taken care of the homeless, so we have less. But we do still have it nighttime. There's a lot of action there. But I think as a whole, our campus is really safe. The SROs are coming not only to help us with getting our kids to class and bringing them back in from the community, but to be role models so that our students can learn about law enforcement and all that. So it's also a positive thing, but I really do appreciate that you think of us and we continue to work really hard at keeping our campus safe.
Thank you very much guys for coming in. It's been awesome to have you and happy Thanksgiving. Appreciate all of you. Superintendent, maybe you and I can stay in touch about other ways that we can help out with stuff.
I would say contact the schools directly, right? There's always room for additional personnel, volunteers, paid work. You know, they're always looking for people to partner with, work on projects. They have campus beautification days. And really always just eyes and ears when school's not in session, right? If you see something, call, right? Make a report. Because we come in the next day and we're wondering like what happened over the weekend or the night before. So yeah, just partner with us. We're open and we're willing and thank you.
Thank you guys. Happy Thanksgiving. We appreciate all you. All right, Wei, do you want to come up?
Aloha mai kako. My name is Wei. I last saw you guys, I think maybe in February. To give a quick update about our project, the Kimole Lane Apartments on the corner of Kimole and Young Street. Morgan, I sent some slides. I don't know how to get them up.
Curtis, you have them?
Okay, sure. I'm just here to give, as you know, as I promised back in February, to give an update. I was made aware that there were some questions at last month's meeting about our program. So I'm so sorry that I wasn't here personally to respond to them at the moment, but here to do that today and respond to any other questions you folks have. The first slide I had was of the project location because that was a question that came up the first time I presented. So I just wanted to kind of put that in context. We have plans for a small 20-unit apartment building at the corner of Kimole and Young Street, which is close to Makali. Sorry, I had a map on the slide. My first slide was the map. And I was made aware that, well, I know there was a very unfortunate traffic fatality on the corner at some point in August or September, I believe. So some of the questions last month were related to that. So it's what I'm here to respond to.
We have it and it looks like that at this moment.
Oh, no. Okay.
All right, I'm sorry. I think you'll just have to keep continuing and hopefully it will load at some point.
Oh, there we go. It's not very big, but you can, sorry, it's hard for those of you in the room. The street at the top of the map is Baritania. The middle is Young Street. To the left side is Makali, just to help orient you a little bit. The red parcel is our project location on the corner of Young and Kimole. So Kimole is just a little bit east of Makali. It's one of the many lanes in our beautiful neighborhood, Makali Mo'iriili. There's lots of small lanes here and it really speaks to the history. There's lots of small lanes here and it really speaks to the history of the neighborhood, how the neighborhood came up as largely a working-class neighborhood, but even prior to that, small farms. The site where our parcel is actually back in the early records was a bullpen. So cows and cattle were kept there. There was rice paddies and kalo all around, as I'm sure many of you know. And so we're on this corner of Kimole and Young Street. There's a small 7,600 square foot lot, as is typical of a lot of the size lots in the community. So what we have planned is a 20-unit apartment building, which will replace what is currently just a two-unit house. This is Kimole Lane coming from King Street headed towards Baritania. Sorry, it's a one-way lane. And the project has been permitted, so we have our permit ready for pickup. We're just sorting out, our contractor will be picking up the permit, as most contractors do for projects. So just sorting out some pieces of financing to get the project built. And we are keeping fingers crossed and expecting that would happen in the late spring or early summer. But to address the questions from last month's meeting about the traffic, as I said, Kimole is a one-way lane. This, where the blue car is, oh, that, the left side, you'll see kind of a gravel parking lot. That's the corner of our lot. Behind it is a two-story home and then behind that is a three-story office building, which was the office of architect John Hara for many, many decades. And actually, John Hara's daughter is a friend of mine and she had told me that where these parking stalls now are, there used to be a very beautiful rock garden that I remember from being there years and years ago. It was designed by an artist and former tenant of the building, Sumire Inokuma. So this was a building behind us was occupied by artists and architects for many, many decades. The rock garden is, is now gone, actually just recently gone and replaced with parking stalls. But the one-way lane travels from King towards Baritania. And the last, or, yeah. Do you, are you able to enlarge that a little bit? That's, that's great. Thanks. So I wanted to share, this is the ground floor plan for the building. And as you see, we have a very wide berth where the corner Kimole meets Young Street, which would be at the top of the screen. This is partially a easement that's mandated by the city. And so the side of that corner of Kimole and Young that we do have control of, even well before this unfortunate traffic fatality happened, was designed to keep the view plane and actually to increase the safety in the area. And this is really to bring it up to today's current traffic standards. We have generous green space there, which will replace all that not-so-great gravel that you see right now. There's a walk path that you see and another strip of green, which should separate the pedestrian path from the traffic on Young Street. Now, we're not able to do a raised sidewalk here, as you see in some other neighborhoods, because none of Young Street has, this section at least, has raised sidewalks. So it would be deemed actually unsafe to have a raised sidewalk because pedestrians would be going up and then back down. And the curb would be an anomaly that would be unsafe. So what we've done is worked with DTS and worked with reviewers at DPP to create what we hope, we all hope in collaboration is the safest plan possible. And a green strip again, separating pedestrians from cars going two ways on Young Street, a delineated walking path that will be paved asphalt, so flat and safe, and then more green space. The view plane, as you're going up Kimole, and if you're going to turn towards the Eva direction, towards town, taking a left turn, you should have actually a little bit more of a view plane than you get now. We don't really have control if you were going to try to turn right. We don't really have control of that as the old wooden building kind of comes right up to the corner.
Wei, could I open this up for questions?
Yes, anytime.
All right, go ahead, Paul.
Question, the last time you were here, we asked you about parking. What are you going to do? Have you come up with anything about that?
So we currently have nine parking stalls and
You have how many apartments?
There are 20 units. Under the current zoning for mixed, well, for mixed-use and apartment buildings, there's actually no parking minimum, unfortunately. So we have provided nine stalls and two, two moped stalls that are to the city's standards for the size they need to be. We've also provided bike parking, which you see, it's, sorry, the screen is so small. It's labeled in the blue area at the top corner, there's bike racks parked there. We have a 7,600 square foot lot. It is not gigantic. We have to maintain the widths of the parking stalls that are mandated and the length or width of the drive aisle that is needed. We also need, you know, proper protected entry and walkways. We have to give space for the utilities to have, to go where they need to go. So we've really tried to strike a balance as much as possible here on a small lot and also to maintain the landscaping and the green space, which is very, very important. We're losing so much of that in all of our neighborhoods. You know, one of the things we worked with, with our civil engineer was really to create more green pervious space on this site than currently exists. So the new constructed site will actually absorb a lot more stormwater than it currently is doing. So again, trying to strike multiple balances. We do have the great fortune of being in a really wonderful neighborhood where lots of services and important things are walkable. Schools, grocery stores, actually the really wonderful little market that just opened up on Baritania by Farm Link, Ho'i Li'i Market is a wonderful small grocer. It's a block and a half away. Yeah, happy to take any other questions.
Anyone else on the board have questions? Daniela?
Thank you, Wei, for your presentation. Just to clarify, sorry, I can't see too well. Is how, in terms of width, is, how wide is the sidewalk space? And how many bike racks are available for residential occupants?
So the bike racks, we are working on, it really depends on the design of the rack itself. But we're trying to target at least six bicycles to be safely parked there. There is also on that ground floor, a ground floor storage area, which will be dedicated storage for tenants of the building. So ostensibly bikes could, you know, somebody's personal private bike could be parked there, too. And the width of the sidewalk, I actually would need to get back to you on the exact width for that.
Thank you, Wei. I also have one more question. In terms of the green space, that's really much needed along Young Street, which is just derelict, I shouldn't use that term, but it's not a pleasant environment. My question would be, in the green space, is it just like a flat lawn area? Or if it's for the time being because of permitting, other cost factors? In the future, it could be utilized as like a bio swell or other green space where stormwater can just be reserved there and go back to the groundwater?
We don't have the green space design totally dialed in yet. I believe the, the piece that is closest to Young Street has to be flat, relatively flat. So, but the piece on the inside, we do have more control over. And it is our desire to do a little bit of contouring to capture as much stormwater from the roof runoff and street runoff as we can on site. The exact plant palette hasn't been selected yet, so what you see on the screen is largely representational. We do have kind of the large corner of green space that you see is slated to be a community garden type usage, which we know is one of the most requested things for our Parks Department, is gardening space for residents. And also our architects, we're also the same architects that worked on the art space lofts building in Kaukako, where they did include planter beds for resident uses. And however many years now that that building's been up, five or six, they say that is the most used amenity in the building. So it was really important for us to honor that kind of activity and to get that activity space there. So it hasn't fully been designed as part of it is meant to be garden area for tenants to use.
All right, go ahead, Daniela.
I cannot read. What do you have at the lower left corner? The different color, bluish, green, darker green?
Yeah, it's, it's green space. It'll be planted landscape, but it hasn't fully been, like the plant palette hasn't been chosen yet.
So what's the difference between using one color and the other color? No, just?
I'm not sure, but I can, I can ask our civil engineer.
Thank you.
Drew?
Thank you for your presentation. Is there any consideration of recreating that rock garden that was removed?
I actually had thought about it because I think the garden was recently removed in the last couple months. Yeah. And so I had thought about talking with our civil engineer about maybe locating some pohaku on our site or something, just to kind of recreate that. I know. So, so I've been in the neighborhood for a long time and I enjoy walking the neighborhood. So I know lots of different little houses and I look at the plants and the few places where we still have huge mango trees in the neighborhood. And those are the areas that are really special to me. And so that's why it was very important to just kind of stand our ground and keep the green space where we could have it. And a couple months ago, when I drove by and saw that the rock garden was being taken out and replaced with parking stalls, it was quite sad, too. But unfortunately, that's, that's not our property, so.
All right, Darrell?
Yeah, your, your parking stalls, you said you had about nine of them? Your parking stall?
Yes.
Are there, are there any visitors parking stalls or guest stalls?
So there is a loading stall on the, close to Kimole. It'll be sort of quote-unquote on the outside of the secured parking area. And the plan is to have that available for loading, you know, UPS, mail, whatever, during the daytime and labeled as reserved for guest or visitor parking for, you know, a couple hours at a time, one or two hours at a time only during the evenings and potentially some weekends. But it seems like the delivery trucks are coming seven days a week now.
So some of your stalls are going to be assigned to tenants?
Yes.
And there's, there are going to be like, uh, street parking close by or no? Probably not.
There is, there is some here and there on Young Street. And then, yeah. I mean, as you, yeah, King and King and Baritania, too, there's metered parking.
Okay. How many stories are, how many floors will it be?
It will be five floors above the ground floor parking, so it'll be a total of six.
Six. Okay. Thank you very much for your time.
You're welcome.
All right, we have time for one more question. Kayla, Lani?
Yeah, I was wondering, what is the, who's the target audience of the tenants that you want to service? And how is that? Is this a Bill 7 development?
Yeah. So right now, the target population that we're trying to achieve and, and it's both, so my commitment and my goal is to create housing that's affordable as possible. So the target that I have in mind is 60 to 80% AMI. This is quite a bit lower than what the Bill 7 projects are targeted to, which was, I think, an 80 to 120% AMI. And that's why the financing is taking us a little while to put together because it's just a different, you know, when you're not bringing in as much rent income, your whole sort of project finances end up looking a little bit different. Yeah. I don't know how else I can answer that.
All right. Thank you very much, Wei. We appreciate you keeping us updated about this project.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm happy to come back again. Promise to come back again when we've got some real movement happening and a clear schedule. But right now, I would say that's probably late spring, early summer. But if you have questions or if I get a heads up that there is going to be, I'm happy to come again anytime. Thank you.
Thanks so much. All right, Daniela, it's your time.
Thank you. I have sent to, I gave it to all the member board a copy of my resolution. I send an edited revised copy to a number of senators, thank you for coming, and other city officials. So I will, can you hear now? Okay, thank you. I will not read the resolution because you have it and you can read it. However, I will summarize and say that what I'm asking is a widening of the sidewalk on the section of Makali Street and that then becomes Makali Bridge across the Alawai and also an addition of a bike lane. The reason is that, that sidewalk has a lot, is, it's unsafe for pedestrian, can be hazardous. Because on the sidewalk, there are several elements that conflict with pedestrian. A number of obstacles, like a light pole, the bus stop, a huge trash can, a hydrant, that reduce the width, the walkable width of the sidewalk, which is further reduced when you reach the railing of the bridge. In certain point, even reach three feet and eight inches, which means people with a stroller or with a wheelchair cannot be accompanied side by side by somebody else. I will show a little PowerPoint presentation, taking few seconds per slide, just to confirm the problem with the narrow sidewalk. Okay, you can go ahead. So this is the sidewalk that becomes narrowed by obstacle. Next slide. Again, other example of mother with strollers, fire hydrant. Next. Again, stroller, fire hydrant. Again, people that, they get off the sidewalk because there is no room for them to walk while there is a stroller or wheelchair. And often, next, also bicycles. Bicycles come and go from Waikiki to Makali, Makali to Waikiki. They don't use the lane, very rarely either lane. There are two lanes along this segment of Makali. They don't use it. And so the risk, pedestrian risk to be hit by, by bicycle or by electric scooter or electric skateboard. On, please. Okay. In the middle of the bridge, there is a bus stop. The bus comes every 40, 30 to 35 minutes, stays between 10 and 15 minutes. And so there is this pedestrian or bus rider going on and off, creating another obstacles. Go on, please. Okay, skateboard, electric skateboarder, they just come and run on the sidewalk. Next. Again, other situation of narrowing of the sidewalk. And you see, by the way, a wall on the left. Next. Okay, next, again, okay. And this is also from an aesthetic point of view. This is the point of entry to Waikiki or to Makali. And so this is what you see. They open, open to the sky duct and pipes. Not unsightly pavement and, next, please. And then there are also grates on which, okay. And the middle one can be walkable, but it's dangerous. And there is no reason, look at, look at what happened on the diamond head side of the bridge railing. So there is ample, again, there is ample space to create, to enlarge, widen the sidewalk on the diamond head side of this wall and on the diamond head side of the bridge, where now there are all these visible pipes. And there is also room to create a bike lane. At the moment, is not used because it's dangerous. It is sandwiched between two lanes. And if the biker ride needs to make a right turn, has to And if the biker ride needs to make a right turn, has to cross the car lane to his right, so it's dangerous, they don't do it. Go on, the cost of bridge, this is, if we think of a widening that is about twelve or fifteen wide, which is would be sufficient for the widening of the sidewalk and for a bike lane. However, I got some information on AI. It's not as expensive as would be to build a whole new bridge. And my calculations are very rough and have to be all verified by engineer. But when I put together a bunch of information from AI, whether, you know, with a, with a grain of salt you have to take, the whole bridge, this widening would probably cost two or three million in all. And and this is a needed improvement because right now it's dangerous. You had some calculation and also here I am, if there are any questions. Thank you for listening. And so I remind you, I'm asking for the, for you to accept the resolution, approve it for the widening of the sidewalk and addition of a bike lane for the problems that I mentioned just earlier, one minute ago.
Do we have a motion to discuss this resolution?
I motion the resolution.
To discuss?
To discuss, yes.
To adopt and then we'll discuss it.
Yes. Pardon?
To adopt and then we'll discuss.
To adopt, yes, all right.
Yeah. Anyone second?
My second.
Okay, thank you for the two secunders. All right, who would like to ask questions or respond or give edits? Anyone on the board have? Go ahead, Drew.
I use this, uh, this way to get from Waikiki to my apartment over here. And I find that this is the most dangerous part, riding a bicycle, because there's no other bridge across the canal. It would be great if we could repair that because it it poses a number of dangers to a bike rider, pedestrian. Thank you for pointing this out.
Sure, I also talked to people, neighbors. And when I mentioned that I was presenting this resolution, they also confirmed that they are afraid to walk on that segment of sidewalk.
Any other feedback from board members? Go ahead, Justin.
Thank you, Chair. I concur with the sentiments expressed on this board tonight. The bridge is along the entire stretch from Kalakaua of Macaulay Street all the way down to Baritania is a tier-two pedestrian injury slash fatality intersection corridor. And current complete streets plans do not, under engineering constraints, do not go up to the bridge or cover that portion. So for the foreseeable future, as is, if no action is taken or consideration, it will remain a fairly unsafe, unpleasant walking experience. I think speaks volumes to the fact we are just starting to wrap our heads around trying to make our city more walkable, bikeable. And I think in an ideal world, complementing and enhancing this bridge, along with the future Alapono Bridge, when that's built, et cetera, can just make this a much more safer, accessible community, not only for Macaulay Muliili, but for those going into Waikiki and town. So I really appreciate tonight's resolution. Thank you.
All right, anyone else?
There are a couple of typos that I think we need to if, if, if it, yeah, amend if this moves forward. Also, perhaps changing this to just people with strollers. Hopefully not only mothers push children in strollers, anybody can push people in strollers. And then I have a question about this particular second-to-last paragraph. Whereas the cost of widening such sidewalk and adding such new lane is greatly less expensive than the construction of a new bridge on the Alaway Canal at the University and Kalai Moku Landings. It feels like there's a suggestion that us passing this resolution also would imply that this board suggests that we are against the Alapono Bridge project. Is that a correct assumption and interpretation that I am making is my question?
It's an interpretation that you can make it, but this is an observation that if I compared cost, that's the result. I I have to present a rough estimate of the cost to provide a better reason for you to to accept or the resolution.
Yes, I, first of all, I agree with, you know, everybody's sentiments about how unsafe that particular area is. And I don't think I will be able to support this resolution for a number of reasons. One, you know, because of the the suggestion that is in here, that we don't want both projects. And the other thing is, I guess, it kind of leaps to a solution before maybe something that could be supported, at least by myself, that is maybe something that, a resolution that is requesting a study from the city, a safety audit, some examination of other alternatives to address the safety more immediately. Like maybe you mentioned the bus stops, which it does seem like maybe that's an issue. Could those, you know, is there an option to relocate those? Did you reach out to the city to see why this, which notably sounds like is, you know, admittedly unsafe if this was examined by the Complete Streets Committee? And why it was not included?
I was surprised that it was not included in the, in the complete street. So I'm, I, that's why I'm suggesting it.
Did you reach out to them, though? I think that's just what Michelle wanted to clarify.
I have not reached out to the city for this particular question.
Go ahead, Chris.
I believe, or sorry, I agree a lot with what Michelle said. Knowing how projects progress, this seems to be very unlikely with the wall and the bridge. We've had them speak of the Macaulay Bridge already. And if it really is safety, I don't see any sort of suggestion on having HPD ticket cyclists on the sidewalk. There's bike lanes right there. I feel like this is a sleight of hand that you're trying to say no to the Alaway Canal Bridge. But yeah, it just seems very unlikely that this would happen and that I don't agree with it.
All right, go ahead, Justin, unless Daniela wants to respond.
I'm, I'm not sure if it was a comment or if it was a question.
No question, just stating my stance.
Thank you. I do appreciate this very candid discussion tonight. My question, I will express, I wholeheartedly support Alapono Bridge, but that is separate from this discussion point. At this time, to be fair, the Trump administration has proactively rescinded transportation funding for any project that takes away, say, a travel lane, anything that's quote hostile to cars. So, but that would be, under this scenario, to enhance this bridge would be the cheapest solution and would probably require substantially less costs and no dedicated funding from FTA. Whereas reconstructing and expanding the bridge would be financially tenuous and may elicit a response, an unpleasant conversation from the federal government. Whereas the Alapono Bridge is a separate, mostly federally funded project. I won't go to that discuss, converse, controversy this tonight, but I I would personally recommend holding an additional discussion or conversation for this particular resolution. I wholeheartedly support enhancing the bridge. But I think this portion here, whether, and I don't believe it was installed with, I think it could be interpreted in such a way that may not align with the, uh, the views of this board if they are expressed. Because we have not issued a resolution for opposition to Alaway Bridge. But until that time, withstanding, I think this, inclusions to edits and wordsmithing, this can be used in additional revision. But I support the spirit of the resolution, but I think verbiage needs to be adjusted accordingly. Thank you.
Justin, this board, this particular board hasn't issued a resolution on the bridge, but the board in general in the past couple of years has. Daniela, did you want to respond to that?
I need, I, well, not on the spot, but I, I need to, a few seconds to.
Okay, all right, we can definitely circle back to you. Paul, were you trying to say something?
Being from New York, is there a way we could get both those bridges and get a good price for them?
All right, go ahead, Chris.
I don't know if the wall along the sidewalk on Macaulay is a historical wall, but working on another project along the Alaway, or not Alaway, sorry, Alamoana, there is another sidewalk that has light poles and fire hydrants that change the width of it. And it was struck down because the wall next to it was a historical wall that could not be touched or moved or whatnot, so.
You don't need to tear down the wall because there is room to the diamond side of the wall to enlarge or create another sidewalk. It's not necessary to, to tear it down.
Daniela, I wanted to just give my two cents on this. I have like shudder in my body every single time I have to walk on that sidewalk and I get mad for all the reasons that you just showed in the picture. So I'm really glad that you called attention to this. And I know some people wanted some things were going to be a little bit more specific or aware of the political climate. But I also think that there's value to supporting resolutions just as a way of flagging something that we all kind of know to be below par for what our neighborhood should be. And so I'm glad that you did that. Going back to some of the comments about concerns that this was an indirect way to kind of rebuke the other bridge, I would say I will only support it if we're willing to strike the paragraph in here about the, right now, it talks about greatly less expensive, that the construction of the new bridge. I think you acknowledge yourself that the figures are a little bit general for that. And it seems to put a tension between these bridges that I don't want to insinuate here.
Hold on a second. I re, I reread the, whereas the cost of widening such sidewalk and adding such new lane is greatly less expensive than the construction of a new bridge on Alaway Canal. However, this is a true statement. So I don't know how a true statement can be interpreted. This is a reality. If I say the sidewalk is three feet, eight inches wide, or if it is six feet wide, is a statement of reality.
Sure, but right now we don't have any specific figures that are in there. And because of the fact that it compares against another bridge that I'm personally in favor of, I'm not going to vote for a resolution that would be doing that. So if you are not comfortable striking this, and this is your, this is your resolution, we understand that. But I'm just letting you know where my support falls for this.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else on the board that has questions? Justin, go ahead.
I think likewise, I would have to abstain from voting because I do think unless a more comprehensive fiscal feasibility study or fiscal analysis was conducted, determine whether that statement, I mean, topically, we can say yes. Widening a bridge should theoretically be cheaper than building a new bridge, unless you run into a wide variety of issues and structural engineering that actually balloons the cost substantially. I think we saw that with our Honolulu Rail project. So I think, even though I'm supportive of that project, I will acknowledge that's its significant flaws there. So I think I would strongly caution incorporating this portion here because it can be interpreted as such. Or I think for the very, at least, it's making a presumption that this no feasibility study of financial concerns have addressed yet. So it would be jumping the shark, if you will, to use that statement loosely.
Is there anyone else on the board that would like to make a comment about this? Or online? Okay, we have a quick time for community questions and then we need to decide what we're going to do with the resolution. Go ahead, Laura.
Okay, first, a little historic memory. In two thousand and seven, we had a resolution that says fix the, fix the Macaulay Bridge before anything else. It's been out there. DTS and others have just ignored everything. Also, just recently, we passed the resolution that set a full EIS. The full EIS will address all of these concerns going to the Macaulay Bridge and to all the view planes that go to Diamond Head and the Ko'olau's and everything else. It's all within a larger picture that can be addressed if we will have our legislators move forward and try to get something from these people, even though they are handling the city and county direction. Okay, so you're, you're, you're quibbling about language. Then in fact, if we conduct the resolution that we've already passed in the correct way with a full EIS, you will have your answers to it and it will tell you what the costs are and it will tell you that the Macaulay Bridge can be fixed in a certain way. And you know that the, the Board of Water Supply got their own way and put a big water pipe in over the side without any concern about how nice it would look. And that's the real shame. That's where the bike and pedestrian pathway would go. Thank you.
All right. Okay, Allison, go ahead.
Very quickly, early on, we had a conversation with DTS and I brought up that same concerns about Macaulay Bridge. And at that time, whether it's true or not, I don't know, but they'd said that the Macaulay Bridge is a historic bridge. So they were not able to do certain things. So I think that needs to be investigated at least. And before, maybe the Board of Water Supply did something that did not touch the bridge or in any way change it significantly. So, but what you're talking about may be something that will, you know, make a significant change. But I do, I agree with you on that. But if, but if it's a historic, you know, structure, then the city's hands might be tied, just, just FYI.
Thank you, I appreciate.
All right, I'm sorry, we're going to move to a vote now. Laura, we, Laura, Laura, we need to move to a vote now. We have a bunch of other things that we still have to take care of. Okay, let's go ahead and vote.
Aldana?
Nay.
Erickson? Johnson, absent. Kachuk? Menina?
Abstain.
Minarby? Pope? Okay, abstain. Quadry?
No.
Robati? Salas?
No.
Young? Young? Daryl? Daryl Young, your vote on the resolution to widen the sidewalk and bike lane on the Macaulay Street Bridge. Okay. Ann Lee? Lee? Okel Wong? Ann Lee? On a vote of two ayes, six nays, and three abstentions, the resolution has not been adopted.
All right, moving on. Josh Green, representative. You okay? What happened, Gary?
Oh, I had surgery a couple of weeks ago, so, but getting better. Chair Lee, members of the board, thank you for allowing me to give you this report. I, I saw the two items in the agenda. And I wasn't sure if there was something you, sure if you wanted something addressed regarding the Department of Transportation, if there were specific questions.
Where the speed cameras were?
So.
Noise cameras?
I know that the speed cameras, I can, well, let me, let me read what I got from DOT. I was hoping somebody could make it to the meeting, but we couldn't arrange it. But we can definitely have them either respond to questions or have them at the next meeting. I know, I think it's in January. I know, I think it's in January, right? But I can definitely have them at the next meeting in January. But I'll write down that you would like the location of speed cameras. I don't know if there's a map. I know there's a map online for the location of the sound of the noise cameras.
Okay.
So I don't know if the link that you provided would have the location of the cameras, but.
Yeah, I believe that they do have the link. It's okay. We can talk about who might be best to come from DOT.
Okay, you still want the update or?
Your up, your update that you were going to read?
I was actually going to give some information from DOT about those two subjects.
Thank you.
So DOT said that although the citations were supposed to go out November 1st, due to a technical issue, no citations have been issued. A software problem was discovered. When speed violations and red light violations were tied together in the same system, it was difficulty with the courts to process. So to avoid creating extra work for the courts, DOT worked to resolve the software issue before issuing citations. And they expect to issue citations mid-December. So be on guard mid-December, just in time for the holidays. But in accordance with the law establishing the Automated Speed Enforcement Program, cameras are only allowed to be installed in locations where red light cameras exist. So if you see the 10 locations, oh, there's a new, in your news release, the speed cameras have to go where the red light cameras are. And for this neighborhood board, I believe, Macaulay and Algaroba, right? Okay, for the noise camera pilot, they're continuing to install the 10 noise cameras. In some locations, they need to get a right of entries before the cameras are installed. So they'll hope they'll be completed in January. The closest noise camera for this board would be Kapialani and Hawa Street. Unlike the red light, speed cameras and noise cameras are portable. So they can move them to other locations if needed. If this board has a specific location, they would like to be considered. They can either let me know or if you want to send me the information, I could certainly pass it on to DOT. But it's, it's important to understand that per Act 63, it's a pilot program to gather data on noise levels. There's no citations or any type of enforcement. If residents have noise complaints, they should still contact HPD.
Oh, I feel like you have suggestions of where the noise camera should go. No? No?
There's no citation or anything like that. So the people on Punahou and Baritania, we go crazy over there. It's just that you cannot believe how loud it is there. And we're on the quiet side of the block, the four corners. So the camera does nothing or the speed thing with no consequences for getting that ticket. Can't do anything about it.
Anyone else have intersection suggestions? Go ahead, Drew.
Kapialani and Eisenberg. Or Kapialani and University.
Anyone else on the board with suggestions?
I'm just curious though, are we talking about the cars or mopeds?
Both, both are allowed.
Okay. Motorcycles too.
Laura? Can you come to the mic? Laura, can you go to the mic? So people online can hear.
Kui Le and Waikia and Hii Evi and University. Because DTS will not put in speed bumps or stops there. There is speeding up at the corners and at the, where it should be stopped.
So those are speeding concerns, not noise, not noise concerns. Okay.
Any other noise complaint suggestions? Okay, well, we'll email you if we have more.
Okay.
Did you have other stuff?
Other questions?
Go ahead, Paul.
Chad, you have one question and I, I might be dumb for this one, but I heard something, this is true.
Speak into the mic?
True or not, but is it true that we are number one in the world for taxing tourists? And the money we get from that, I'd like to know goes where?
I don't know if we can actually.
Somebody's spending that money.
Do you know who the source of that would be or?
No, like I said, I just heard it on, on the radio, I think it was 101.1.
Yeah, and that might be an exaggeration, but.
$0.50, where does that go?
For the which tax, the TAT?
Going into a hotel, renting a car.
Fancy accommodation tax, oh.
Everything, everything a tourist does. We are number one in the world.
Hey, I have.
We're pretty good. I mean, I would think that some of that money should come back into our state and say, okay, Laura, you don't have to pay this much tax. Or you and Johnny at school, we get lunch and dinner.
But so I, I think, are you supportive of the tourist tax or are you against it?
I'm supportive if it's going to where it should go.
Yes.
That's all.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Actually, maybe not in January because I think that January is going to be a crazy meeting. But February would be a great time to talk about the tourist tax and where we are with the green fee, especially since there's a lawsuit about that right now. And I know that a bunch of people have suggested where they think the green fee money should go. I don't know if there'll have been a decision at that point, but that would be great for us to get a sense of what's going on with that. All right. Thank you, Gary. Happy Thanksgiving and hope your recovery goes well. All right, I think Elmer's coming out of the cave.
Hello, everyone. I'm Makai, University of Hawaii. I just wanted to give you some updates. December 11th is our last day of instruction. The 15th to the 19th is, 19th is our finals week. And then our 20th is our mid-year commencement. It is from 9:00 to 11:30. So it's a combination of both undergraduate and advanced degrees. I want to kind of share a little bit about, I think you guys have heard about the US Department of Education proposing rules regarding professional licenses. This is regarding those who have social work degrees, nursing, as well as.
Architecture too?
No, not architecture. Mostly the health sciences.
Public health.
Public health matters. And simply what it is, it's to kind of create some rules regarding the use of federal funding. Some of our, some of our schools are really impacted, UH Manoa, UH Hilo, and West Oahu are greatly affected. But it also has students impacted, especially those that are in a minority component that are very much in there. But I just wanted to kind of share that. I want to keep it short because I know you guys, it's been a long, long, long week for you guys. So I'll take any questions you may have.
All right, go ahead, Justin.
Thank you. I'll keep, my question will be brief. With the second segment of Skyline having opened and new express lines such as the W having opened Monday through Friday, has the university system seen any changes in the commuting habits of students coming from west or central Oahu or higher levels of satisfaction of students getting to university on time faster or avoiding traffic congestion?
Well, University of Manoa itself has our own program, which utilizes the bus system as well as alternative travel. We are in discussion with the city and heart to kind of expand further. I'm not, I mean, ideally it would be perfect from UH Manoa to UH West Oahu. But yeah, we're, we're in that discussion now.
Thank you.
Welcome.
All right, go ahead, Laura.
You know what I'm going to ask you about. Have, has the university administration decided to walk back the College of Ed open space and let it be and not put an entertainment center in there? And you know, the outrage from the Manoa and the Mo'eele'i communities was huge. Could you maybe on the next time around coming here, find out what their update is, if they respect us? Yeah, I, I hope that they will, the administration will respect us and our wishes not to crowd things into that grand open space that makes us the UH Manoa campus. Thank you.
Let me answer a little bit about that. The University of Hawaii actually has no plans for that area yet. It's still in the, in the open discussion component. I will ask them to come and do a presentation for you, like they did at Manoa last month, to talk about the latest survey about that area and what was requested. You know, there are a whole lot of discussion of how to utilize it. Not only, not only entertainment center, but simply what do you do during the interim when it's closed? The biggest issue that University of Hawaii has, and you guys all know this, is parking and travel and so on. So what would happen if that place is closed? We should, you know, what suggestion, maybe utilizing that as parking temporarily, you know, for, to kind of use that. But I, I will ask the coordinators to come and talk to you guys in January or February. Let me know. Sure.
February.
For work, yeah.
All right. Thank you very much. Happy Thanksgiving, Elmer. All right, Senator Ihara.
Good evening. I'm here mostly to listen. We're in recess, as you know. We're going back in session in January 21st, which is the last, third Wednesday in January. So one is, I just, I'm, I'm open to hear whatever, I'm here to hear what your concerns are. But one of the things I'm, I'm, one of my major concerns, I've been in office for a long, long time. And we have, affordable housing has gotten worse in the last 40 years, not better. And I've looked into that and found that the mantra is to build more houses. Without, but problem is that the local workforce cannot afford housing, a million dollar house. The average sale price, the average worker cannot pay, laborers. If you're in the stock market, maybe, but for most people, we, we work, you know, you work for wages and the salaries are not high enough to get a mortgage and pay the, pay the mortgage. So what needs to happen would be, my interest is in having a housing market for the workforce, which means that you have to have the build, see, the state, the county, even Oha, I think. We are subsidizing through tax exemptions, benefits, zoning exemptions and so forth, as well as mandates to keep the houses warm until someone in outside Hawaii can buy it. Because most of them, almost all the exemptions are not in perpetuity. You save it for 15 years, 30 years, 60, even 65, 60 years is for rentals. But I had someone work in my office last session, he was forced to move out because the rentals 60 years ago are expired. Their Queen Emma Garden area, they have those condos. So, so I'm, I'm, I'm trying to find ways to tell the story. And it really is a graph that once we, well, the hardest thing is to have people think intergenerational, multi-generational. Because then you're thinking about 60 years. Then you can have a graph that tells you in 60 years, all the benefits we throw in, they're going to all disappear. Yet we're still doing it. So I am learning how to, this has been going on for a long time. But somehow, people have said it, but it hasn't, it's somehow, I'm not sure why we don't want to hear it or it's too complicated. I don't know what it is. Now the traction is the more native Hawaiians are moving out. Now that tells you something. These are people who are not, do not want to leave your homeland. Who'd want to, but they're forced to. So anyway, that will, so I'm looking for any ideas of how to tell the story. Because once lawmakers know that what we're doing is bedwarming, then we will maybe change and require that if we're going to give a benefit, we want the benefit be for beyond the time that they're now offering.
All right, thank you for coming to the meeting. We don't have time for questions, unfortunately. All right, Senator Fukunaga.
As a quick follow-up to the reports that we sent out earlier, I want to direct your attention to page two, where the Climate Advisory Council did receive a lot of proposals. And they did conduct a briefing for our majority caucus. The video of the webinar that was held last week is going to be on their website. To find out more, please watch that and please stay tuned in January and February. I'm happy to answer questions.
All right, sorry, we don't have time for questions right now, but thank you so much for coming to the meeting. All right, I think Venus is on for Senator Moriwaki.
Simon, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, hi. So aloha, everyone, and thank you so much for participating in Senator Moriwaki's annual community survey. I've put the link to Senator's results there in the chat. I'll be fast. Between August 6th and October 3rd, 277 residents from Kaka'ako, Waikiki, Alamoana and Macaulay, as well as near neighborhood, nearby neighborhoods, shared their thoughts with us. Oh, we, we don't have the results specifically from Macaulay. We're still working on that, but we will definitely share that at the next meeting. But if you do need specific results regarding Macaulay, you're welcome to call our office. Our office is 808-586-6740. Briefly, your top concern in regards to the survey is public safety. And I had mentioned in the last meeting, what we're doing about that is we're working on the habitual violent offender law. We're trying to make it permanent. Basically, it's upgrading certain violent misdemeanors to a Class C felony. If someone commits a crime, commits the same offense three times within five years. Another major priority that you folks had communicated to us was homelessness. Many of you emphasized the need for more mental health and substance abuse treatment, as well as kauhali villages and permanent supportive housing. For those who may not be familiar with kauhali projects, they're small villages of, a small village of tiny homes or cottages with shared kitchens and such. And it's designed to be supportive community environment. Regarding revenue options, nearly three quarters of the respondents supported taxing REITS, specifically real estate investment trusts, which are companies that own income-producing real estate and eliminating the dividend paid deduction keeps more of that revenue in Hawaii. Additionally, with regard to the survey, there was mixed, there were mixed responses regarding recreational marijuana and the majority opposed legalized gambling. Other concerns in the survey that we received responses for related to condo insurance, excessive noise, sea level rise and development in Kaka'ako Makai. And so we're actively working on legislation, planning and funding to address all those issues. Mahalo again for sharing all of your thoughts, all of your decisions and responses really helping crafting all of the legislation. The session starts in.
Venus, I think we have to move on right now because we are out of here in negative three minutes.
Okay, got it. Oh, January 21st is the opening day of the legislature. Thank you so much, everyone. Mahalo.
Thank you so much. That was great with the survey. Okay, I don't know if anyone from Representative Garrett is here. Hi, Representative Olds, we saw you earlier, but I think you left, but I think you're online.
Hello, good evening, everybody. You guys caught me with my bodo bodo clothes and my white crocs.
Yeah, we saw the crocs. All right, you have 30 seconds.
Just real quick, yes, sorry, my, my kids finished kind of late early, so I figured I'd try to get in there for the last one of the year. The newsletter's in the chat. And I want to invite everybody to the Mo'eele'i Christmas Parade, December 11th. This is hosted by the Kupuhulu Mo'eele'i Lions Club. We're going to have local school, children, agencies in the neighborhood walking from Kohio Elementary at 6:30 PM. And we end at Old Stadium Park. So we'll be going through the Eva side of South King Street, near the post office and Fox Alley, down through Baritania, turning left onto Eisenberg and finishing at Old Stadium Park. So just be advised, there could be some traffic that day. Also in the chat, if you're interested in working at the legislature, we are looking for help. The link is in the chat and I, no questions, I guess.
All right. Yes, everyone come march in the parade, because the Neighborhood Board was in the parade last year. It was fun. All right, Representative Tam? Hi, Representative Tam, I'm sorry, I know you're here, but you have to move on because this meeting room needs to close. All right. Is there any community concerns? Go ahead, Laura.
First, first of all, anything that's taken away from a supposed bridge going across the canal, that's .91, very narrow acreage, has to be replaced in kind in our neighborhood with full monetary support of another park. There is no plans for that at all, and therefore we are being discriminated against by taking away that. The other thing is, I hope that some people here on this board, besides Daniella, and I guess myself, will come to the next Alauai Watershed Special District meeting. It is way top-down, and it is way Waikiki-based. They, it's at the earlier iteration.
30 seconds.
It was a real she-bye for taxing, the taxpayers here, for the base that's in Waikiki. So come out and make it a balanced group. Right now, it's not balanced. Okay, thank you. It's not till March sometime, is the next meeting they'll have.
Okay.
But there could be some, if I get any feedback, we'll let you know.
Thank you. All right, everyone, thank you for coming to the meeting. Please come to the parade and the cleanup day. I will email you all to remind you about that. It'd be great to have everyone there. Happy Thanksgiving, and thanks for all your great questions to DOE.